Leading to order, first we'll have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rep, will you lead us in a prayer, please?
Play with me. Father, we thank you for all the much-needed rain and the beautiful weather. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. Please be with all of the hurricane victims and their families this season, and most recently, all the people affected by Hurricane Nate. Protect our storm watchers and all the volunteers assisting with storm ravaged communities as well. In addition, we would ask your guidance in assisting with the families of those who lost their lives in Las Vegas. We also ask you be with the responders who came to the scene in order to help save lives while risking their own. We pray for our students, teachers, support personnel, administrators, for success in our educational system and in life itself. Please keep our men and women of the armed forces safe as they are all in our prayers. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Row call, please.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Tru. Mrs. Zimmerschied.
Here.
This time, we'll have the Employee of the Month and Friend of Education Awards. First, we'll have our famous athletic director, Jared Freeman.
Famous.
Oh, famous.
Yeah.
That can be good or bad.
Jared.
You don't get to sit down.
Hi, it's my pleasure to, my pleasure to examine Mr. Freeman with our Certified Employee of the Month, and I'm going to read what's
What his colleagues wrote about him. Since Jared has become Athletic Director, he has been visible and accessible to coaches, parents, and staff. He has orchestrated events that highlight our players, our sports, and our history. He is currently playing a vital role in a massive bond issue that will greatly improve our athletic facilities. The improvements to the athletic facilities are tremendous, and we are excited to see the finished products at all sites. Jared is willing to roll up his sleeves and dive into help. He has highlighted our sports programs through a branding effort, the recognition of the 1987 Po-Hi Grill State Basketball Championship, and staying involved on a personal level. He always goes above and beyond to highlight our athletics. He leads by example, he helps with sports bashes, recognitions, and he was the first ever seen mowing and weeding, and he was also seen mowing and weeding before the first game. How lucky we are that Athletic Director exemplifies what it means to be a true team player. Jared, congratulations.
Our second award will be the Support Employee of the Month, Rebecca Higgins, Po-Hi Registrar.
I thought she was coming. Okay, well, we'll just have you read what the colleague said about Rebecca. There's not a write-up in there? All right, hey, say a few words about Ms. Higgins.
She's very deserving.
Kind of explain what Mrs. Higgins does, Mr. Dillbeck.
Mrs. Higgins is the registrar at Po-Hi, and she keeps our office running. She keeps all the support staff going strong. She has an understanding of everything that goes on at Po-Hi, and we appreciate her more than she realizes her more than this award can exemplify. So Rebecca Higgins deserves the award.
The third award is Friends of Education. It's a Cherokee Strip Credit Union Liberty Elementary's Pi Partner.
I'm super excited to be giving this award this evening. Liberty was very fortunate to begin a partnership with Cherokee Strip Credit Union last year through the Chamber of Commerce's Pi Partner Program. Cherokee Strip provided monetary donations for our student activity account benefiting students in many ways, including the funds to purchase Spacha tickets, which is our positive behavior tickets, and pay for student field trips. The credit union was also able to provide bicycles for our annual bingo night, which is coming up, by the way. For our spring fun day, Cherokee Strip provided the prizes and volunteers to run the cakewalk rotation, and it was the favorite of all the kids. It was an amazing day for all of Liberty's students. In addition to supporting students, Cherokee Strip has shown tremendous support for Liberty's staff, including an ice cream social for teacher appreciation week. We cannot begin to express our gratitude to the employees of the Cherokee Strip Credit Union.
Thank you very much. We're very honored by this award. It's very special to us. Principal Martinez does a great job at Liberty Elementary. I believe she's really innovative in what she does, and I think her teachers are very engaged, and the children show the result. They're very dedicated and engaged as a result. So we could be more honored and pleased to accept this award. It's very special to us, so thank you very much.
And if our recipients will go out into the hallway, we'll take your photograph, and it will be on our website and in the newspaper.
Smile, Jared. This time, we'll have the Liberty Elementary Orf Ensemble.
Thank you for having us this evening. This is the Liberty Orf Ensemble, and we have a few things to say before we begin. So my speakers, would you please come up?
Thank you for inviting us to perform this evening. My friends and I are excited to be here. We are the Liberty Orf Ensemble.
We meet we meet we meet once a week, and our main goal is to prepare for the Oklahoma Orf Festival that will take place in February of this coming year. At this festival, we will perform with over 200 other students from all across Oklahoma.
Orf refers to orf school, a musical education approach developed by Carl Orf. Orf instruments are the xylophones, metaphones, and glockenspiel. We play in our ensemble, the music classroom, and music classroom. To say it simply, we like to sing, say, dance, and play.
This evening, we will be performing a traditional Japanese folk song titled "Firefly" that will let you see some of our orf instruments in action. We hope you enjoy.
Thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Orf, would you tell us just a little bit about what Orf stands for?
Sure.
Okay.
Orf is a music education way, just something that we learn when you go to college for music. And the idea behind orf, or orf schoolwork is the longer name of it, is that children learn best in music by singing, playing, dancing, and singing. Tonight, you heard us sing and play our instruments, but that's kind of the approach that I take in my classroom. I try to do at least two of those things every time children come to music class. And this particular group gets to come an extra time a week to participate because they've shown more excellence in music. And then after we practice from now until February, we'll get to go to our arena to perform with other groups. We have two other groups from Ponca City that also go with us, but there'll be over 200 students from around Oklahoma who will perform with us. And we're really excited to share that with you, so thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much for coming.
I can imagine what she did.
Yeah, yeah.
She probably never did a write note the whole time.
Oh, my goodness, with the recorder. See you later. The kids look at the crowd, won't they? The kids in the awards. How are you?
The crowd's so many came out.
Perfect. Wow, hot dog, that's good. He's perfect. Jared's famous, he's perfect.
Yeah. He's dreaming. Item three is the public comment. There is none, so we will now go to the superintendent's report with potential board discussion.
Okay, we have several reports, the first one being 4.1. You may have seen the article in our press release. We could release this information after our last board meeting on our ACT achievement. And the results for 2017 reflect the achievement of our graduates in 2017 over time, and they give an indication of how they are prepared for college-level coursework. So these are our 2017 district and state comparisons for our average ACT scores. It's broken down by core: English, math, reading, science, and then composite. As you can see, in all areas, we are above the state average. Our composite score being a 20.6, with the state average being a 19.4. Obviously, you can see the differential between English, math, reading, and science for the state and Ponca City, and we met or exceeded all of the state averages. The next slide shows the percent ready for college-level coursework, and research done by ACT has established benchmark scores to indicate a student's chance, a 50% chance of scoring at least a B, or a 75% chance of scoring at least a C in higher learning coursework for course credit. And we're above the average in all. Probably, we're pretty much relative to the state, the highest being English for both Ponca City and the state. College algebra, we're still above. College social science and reading, we're still above. And college biology, we're above 34%. And the benchmarks that ACT has established is for English. Students need to score at least an 18 on the English ACT portion of the assessment to be able to score 75% at least a C, or 50% at least a B or better. In math, the benchmark is 22 for college algebra on the math ACT. For social sciences, the benchmark is 22 on the reading ACT. And for biology, the benchmark is 23 for the science ACT. And I want to go back just to this slide. One thing that I can tell you is that in the past, when we were going to school, people that took the ACT were just college-bound students. We have encouraged more and more students to take the ACT each year because our standards align to ACT. And this past year, our juniors, any junior, could take the ACT free of charge. So we had, whether they were college-bound or not. So we had more students taking the ACT. And then next year, the ACT will be the state test for all of our juniors. So we don't know how that's going to change the data, but we have different students on different pathways taking the assessment. So we'll move on just to look at our five-year trend. And as you can see, the district has decreased overall in the last five years. The total decrease is .8 tenths of a percentage point, and the state has decreased as well. And again, that's due to more and more students taking that ACT who are not college-bound. So that's our information on our ACT scores. Any questions about our ACT scores? With all of our juniors taking the scores, taking the tests next year, we don't know how that is going to affect our ACT data that comes out for our graduates. But my guess is those will also be combined in the composite scores. So with all of our students taking the ACT, it could differentiate our scores. Overall, we were pleased with our ACT scores because we knew that more and more students who were not college-bound were taking the ACT.
Are we offering pre-ACT testing and preparation and studies and classes on how to take it?
We do have an ACT prep course, we do.
Is it optional, or here or weekends, or how does it work?
Well, not everyone can, it's a course within our day, but not everyone can take it just because of how the schedule is aligned. It is.
So, but if everybody's going to take it, we're going to throw away all that other stuff, and we're going to be concentrating on that.
Well, that's going to be the next report. We're going to talk about our college and career readiness assessments, and you may have heard just a little bit about that. And obviously, our standards are geared toward ACT, so we will be doing more ACT prep in all of our core classes. Which brings us to 4.2, our college and career readiness assessment. This year, we are going to have a state scoring reset. And in the next week or so, you're going to hear a lot in the media about this. And I wanted to inform the board tonight that on the 11th, our district, as other districts in the state of Oklahoma, will be receiving their raw test scores. Then later in October, we should receive the paper results. And then our parents are going to be receiving results likely around Thanksgiving. But I want to talk to you just a little bit about the history of where we've come and where we are this year. So let's talk about our standards and our state assessment 10 years prior to 2016. We're excluding 2017 test year. Our standards have changed in the last 10 years at least three times. Now, PASS has been around for a long time, our Priority Academic Student Skills. If you'll remember, we moved to Common Core State Standards, and then moved away from that in the state of Oklahoma. Then we went back to PASS, our Priority Academic Student Skill Standards, for a year or two. Our assessments to reflect these standards were based on minimum criteria. They were the Oklahoma Criterion Reference Test. And basically, minimum criteria, minimum competency. There were four levels of proficiency: advanced, proficient, limited knowledge, and unsatisfactory. And I've got advanced and proficient highlighted in red. Previously, with the OCRT test, proficient was on grade level. So what we found with minimum criteria and minimum competency is that we had high remediation rates at the college level. 39% of Oklahoma high school graduates had to take remedial classes in college, which was, this information is from 2015. And a remedial course in college still requires tuition, but there's no credit. So our parents, there's a statistic from the State Department, our parents are out several hundred thousands of dollars for remedial classes. So the decision was made in 2016 to create new standards for Oklahoma, and these standards are the Oklahoma Academic Standards, or the OAS standards. They're comprehensive, more complex standards, requiring students to use deeper levels of thinking or understanding through the lens of depth of knowledge. Depth of knowledge is just a common term that educators use to determine the complexity of tasks. And when I talk about complexity, it's not difficulty level. The vocabulary's not more different, it's just the way that they have to think critically. And I'll break down just a little bit of the depth of knowledge levels, just so you'll have some sort of understanding. Level one would just be your simple skills: recall, state, tell, recite, memorize. A lot of us learned like that in school. Level two in the depth of knowledge levels requires some mental processing. The students may have to graph, they may have to compare, they may have to summarize. Level three, it's a higher level mental processing. Students may have to reason, use evidence, draw conclusions, or hypothesize. And level four is the most complex depth of knowledge level. Students would have to design, create, analyze, or prove. So as they use these different verbs, they're having to think at more complex levels. So what we know is teaching minimum criteria or minimum standards are students may be proficient or on grade level, but they're not prepared to be successful in their college and career. So here's an example of the depth of knowledge distribution for assessed ELA standards, English Language Arts standards. So if you'll look at the old PASS, you can see the pie chart. Most of it was focused on level one, level two. There was some level three, but there was no level four in their thinking, requiring their mental processing. If you'll look at the new OAS standards, it requires much more level three and level four, which are the darker blue and the orange. And to give you an example, a different view of this, the distribution for all content areas, not just ELA, depth of knowledge three, the old PASS was 14%. We've doubled that with our new Oklahoma Academic Standards. At level four, where students have to create, prove, synthesize, there was none. There were no requirements with our old PASS standards. And now 5% of those requirements are with our new Oklahoma Academic Standards. Let's talk about the assessment of more complex standards.
Let me back you up there a minute. Did the SDE approve the new standards? Who wrote the standards?
There were groups of teachers that worked with the SDE.
SDE is actually the one that said it?
Correct.
So is the general theory, and this is real simple, but it's the theory we're going to raise the standard, and that's going to make the kids better?
That is the theory, and we'll talk a little bit about that. There's more than just raising the standards, and
I mean, obviously, you've got to change the way you're teaching, or it's not going to, it's not going to get better.
Without a doubt, and what I can say about Ponca City, and we have some high school teachers in here, that we have moved toward more complex standards. We've been focusing on ACT. We've been encouraging our students to take the test. Is this going to be a learning curve? It is for all of us.
But we have to change the way we teach, or nothing's going to change if we don't.
Without a shadow of a doubt, we have to. We have to do more blended learning and use those skills that require our students to think more critically. But where I'm coming with all of this is when we get our assessment results on Wednesday, it's going to be a jolt to Oklahoma, not just Ponca City, but to everyone. So before, when we were assessing for minimum criteria, we found students to be on grade level, above, or below. And what we found out was they might have been proficient or on grade level, but not prepared to be successful in college or career. So our assessment, this last assessment that we took in the spring of 2017, is now tracked for college and career readiness and aligns with national benchmarks like SAT, ACT, and the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which we call NAEP, which I'm sure you've heard that term before. So schools choose the assessment that they're going to be giving next year, either ACT or SAT at the high school level. We've been focusing on ACT standards, so we're going with ACT in Ponca City. Some schools around the state have selected SAT. Our assessments at the elementary level are going to, the benchmarks are going to be set according to NAEP. So here are the new levels of proficiency that we will have, from OCT to CCRA. OCT was our previous test, CCRA is our college and career readiness assessment. Still going to be advanced and advanced, the highest level. Proficient and proficient. Now, I have this line under the OCCT data. That tells you if they scored proficient or advanced, they were at least on grade level. Now, previously, the OCCT indicated limited knowledge. The CCRA is going to be called basic. Now, doesn't mean that they're necessarily on grade level. They have the basic skills to be ready for college and careers. Unsatisfactory will now be called below basic. So here's our guiding question. Are our students proficient or prepared for college and career? for college and career? And I'm gonna show you a graph. This is for eighth grade math in 2012, 2013. And you can see Oklahoma with the orange bar. It's highlighted in orange. The darker blue bar indicates that our students were reported proficient or above on the state test, on the OCCT, the Criterion Reference Test. The light blue bar shows the percent reported proficient or above by NAEP. So you can see, there is a discrepancy of 42 percentage points. And if you'll look across, there's the least discrepancy in New York. We don't have the greatest gap, but as you can see, we fall within the bottom quartile of our gap. So, for our Oklahoma benchmark changes, Oklahoma has benchmarked its test score performance levels to enable national comparisons. And no one in this room disagrees that we want to compete at a national level. At the high school level, students will take the ACT or SAT in addition to a science test this next year. So our students will take the ACT and a science test, and all of our juniors will take the ACT next year. For the lower grades, third through eighth grade, the national comparability has been accomplished by using the performance levels for NAEP. And where these scores come from, we have been, we have been a sample of a NAEP test before. The NAEP tests are a sample of fourth and eighth grade students every two years. And that's where those benchmarks are determined for NAEP. So our scores for third through eight this year and beyond will be compared to those NAEP national scores. Same thing with our high school, either ACT or SAT. However, our students will be taking the ACT. So we've gotta talk about the importance of comparability. So if you'll look at our previous state assessment, the OCCT, versus a national assessment such as NAEP, look at fourth grade reading. 70% of our students were deemed proficient by our state test, or on grade level, and only 33% compared nationally to the national benchmark. So that's, that's quite a difference. Look at fourth grade math. Significant comparison difference. Eighth grade reading was a huge jump, nearly 50 percentage points in eighth grade math. So for the first time, when our scores come out Wednesday, and we're using national benchmarks, it's going to be a shock to Oklahoma. It's going to be a shock to our teachers. It's going to be a shock to our students and our parents. They've worked really hard, and you know, in this state, that we're always trying to improve our test scores. But there's no way that we can compare this, because it's a total reset. It's not just for Ponca City, it's for the entire state of Oklahoma. I know that the State Department has been really good, leading districts with a toolkit on how to communicate this to their parents, to their teachers, and to their board. So, we really have to think, rethink proficiency, since we're resetting our benchmarks. Since 2011, 45 states have raised their standards for student proficiency in both reading and math. And I've got just a couple of examples for you. Let's take a look at Utah first. ELA is English Language Arts, and then math, third through eight. They changed their standards in 2014. You can see how their test results dropped from 83 to 42, 79 to 42 in math. And then in 2015, you see a gradual increase. Now, it's not gonna jump back up remarkably, 30 to 40 points in one year. Same thing with Arizona. They changed their standards a year later, in 2014, and about the same drop. So, as we have been transitioning to the Oklahoma Academic Standards, this just gives you a little bit of a timeline. In 2014, we did implement more comprehensive science standards. In 2016, we implemented more comprehensive math and English Language Arts standards. Then in the spring of 2017, back in April of last school year, we administered the more complex assessments, which will have the national benchmarks for scoring. Then in 2017, we did our assessment standard setting based on ACT, ACT, and NAEP scores. And the State Department had task force, they had administrators, they had teachers, they had lots of people involved on that. So for our school testing year, for this school year in 2017, 2018, you can see which grades will be taking what tests. So third through eight will all take math and ELA. Fifth and eighth will take a science assessment. Now, those results will be compared to NAEP benchmarks. Then in grade 11, all schools will take either the ACT or the SAT, and one science content. So you see, we don't have any social studies state tests anymore. So, what can we compare? There is no comparison. We can't compare to prior years, it's just not possible. Our new standards do have higher depth of knowledge levels, and our new assessments have a different scale score and different performance level descriptors. This year is a total reset. So we expect, we're having admin council tomorrow, we're going to talk to our principals, and our principals will get this information to their teachers. Many of our teachers already know this information, but many of our parents do not know, and a lot of our communities members do not know. I've tried to communicate this at chamber meetings, our education task force meetings. But here are some key points that I want you to remember. We all want our students to score well in national comparison, and we're working toward this goal to ensure preparedness for college and careers, not just proficiency. And you know that we do a lot of blended learning in Ponca City with our Engage Learning One-to-One Initiative. That's what it's going to take for our students to be able to collaborate, think creatively, be ready for college and career. Another thing to remember, state test scores are only part of the data school leaders and teachers use in identifying student progress, and their strengths, their weaknesses, and their opportunities. And that's what we want to convey to our teachers. If you think about state test scores, we get those after the students have left our class. So they're not, it's not real-time data. In all of our schools, we use formative assessment continually. And when we're using STAR throughout the district, it correlates to our state benchmarks. We have made progress in all areas. So we're gonna communicate to our teachers that this isn't the end-all, be-all. We know we're continuing to grow. It's important not to let state test scores overtake the worth of other educational experiences. We know that our extracurricular activities, our clubs, and the arts keep kids in school. It helps them with coming to school. It's why they want to come to school. And not everything that matters for college and career preparedness is measured in a state test. It can't measure if you're a team player, if you have a strong work ethic, if you have grit. And that's one of the biggest indicators in being successful in anything you do, college or career. It can't determine if you communicate effectively, if you're flexible, or if you're resourceful. And without a doubt, last of all, the instructional skills of the classroom teacher and their ability to build positive relationships are the most contributing identifiers for student success. So, where do we go forward from this point? We need to inform and reassure our staff. This is going to be hard on them. If they, if 70% of their class was proficient last year in ELA, and only 40% was proficient this year, based on the national comparisons. We know what our formative data tells us. We have to assure our staff that we are not comparing results from last year to this year, because we can't. There is no comparison. We have to inform and educate our parents. And this is just an assumption, this is just my guess. I think it's going to be really hard on our parents, whose students have always scored advanced on the OCCT assessments. Because chances are, they're not going to have that advanced score. The assessment was more complex, and we use national benchmarks to score them. The state has produced a video to share with our parents. I'm going to tell the principals that I will come out and talk to any of their PTAs and explain the shift the state has taken. We need to effectively communicate the school community of the changes as well. First of all, with the board. And I know that the State Department is going to do a press release, and Joy Hoffmeister is meeting with the legislators while they're in special session. But I'm also going to meet with our news media together, just here at the board, and explain how we are doing a total reset with our more complex standards and our national comparability on scoring. So, any questions? That's, that's a big jolt to Oklahoma. It's going to be a game changer. Are these going to change everything, just because we create new standards and test differently? No. You're exactly right, Robyn. We're going to have to change the way we teach and the way that students are learning. And we've made huge bounds in this area with our blended learning and more complex standards. And I think in Ponca City, it's not going to be such a big shift for us, as it will be for other districts who have not started making the shift to more complex teaching and learning.
Let me make a comment or two. I mean, there's no other way to say it, but to me, the State Department has let the students down in the state of Oklahoma. Forty-five other states have done something to improve it, and all of a sudden, we're half as good as we were before. And that's really, across the board, we're gonna look half as good.
Right.
Somebody's been sitting on their butt, doing nothing, making it happen. I mean, there's no other way to say it. But, but that's water under the bridge. Back to my first point, ACT's gonna be the measurement. You know, you can have your little chart about grit and determination and all that. You don't get into college on that. You get into college based on your ACT scores.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, that's cut and dried, the only answer. So, I would strongly recommend that if any kid wants to take the pre-ACT courses, we need to make it available to them. Don't make it that only a third of the kids can get access to it, because we don't have enough teachers, or we don't have enough classrooms. I don't care if it is an elective. We need to make that available to the kids, because this, this is not gonna sit well. I've been reading about it, and I knew this was coming. But it is not gonna sit well with the parents, when all of a sudden, the whole world's gonna revolve around ACT scores, and half of them aren't as good as they were before. And that's the way it's gonna be perceived.
We understand that, and we're trying to get ahead of it, and just be as positive as we can with our parents.
I think you guys need to really take a look at making that pre-ACT test elective available to any, any student that wants to take it.
Is Mr. Dill back here? Zach, how many sections are there of the ACT prep course? I didn't bring my schedule with me.
I think there are only two a semester. One, about each semester, Betsy Easley teaches one, and Kim White teaches one.
Is there a grade requirement? Only certain grades can take it?
I believe it's typically sophomores and juniors.
Correct.
And maybe seniors. I don't think freshmen take it, are allowed to take it, just because they're likely to not. Very few freshmen will be taking the ACT on their own. I believe seniors and juniors get priority, but I, I can't swear to that, 'cause I'm not, I don't know how they have that one set up for enrollment purposes. But I believe there's two sections each semester.
It sounded like to me, the freshmen needed...
Yeah.
See what's really like.
A lot of the other schools around the state, they'll start in ninth grade, take a pre-ACT test. I mean, it's available early on, and that's...
Well, and I think our schools also have, Duke University sends out something where kids get selected to take the test as well, in sixth and seventh grade.
We do have the sophomores take the pre-ACT. All sophomores took that a couple weeks ago. It's the same format as the ACT, same sections. As far as I know, it's the exact, I don't know about the difficulty, but all of our sophomores were required to take that. They had it some one day, some the next day, because it's a four-hour test. And they were testing all morning.
As a parent, I wouldn't be very excited if my kid had to take some elective they didn't really want and could not take, the pre-ACT, or the ACT prep, or whatever it's called. I don't know what it's called. I mean, I think you guys need to take a hard look at that.
And, and Robyn, another thing, since all of our students are going to be taking this, it's going to be the responsibility of all of our core teachers to do ACT prep for whatever their core is, as well. We can't just rely on our ACT prep classes. They're going to have to change what they do in their, in their core area, like for science and math and...
Teachers and parents, not just teachers.
Yeah. You know, I don't think just the class is going to make the difference. Sure, it'll be helpful, but our teachers are gonna have to change in, in their daily routine. They're going to have to prepare in their cores.
Yeah, we have to educate different, and we have in the past.
We do.
There's no different, there's no getting around it.
Yeah. I think the ACT prep class...
We're half as good as we were, is the way it's gonna be perceived.
Before, when it was just given to the college-bound students, the ACT prep class may have been ideal. But now, there's no choice. Everyone's going to have to be prepared for ACT preparation in all their core subjects. It is going to be a jolt. We're gonna try to be real positive. We, we know that our staff works hard. They're continually trying to grow, and it's going to be hard for our staff. It's going to be hard for our parents. But you cannot compare apples and oranges. And if we do, then shame on us.
Well, the State Department really just raised the bar, and in essence, have forced the schools to go to the whip a little bit harder, and a different way to get up there.
Correct. And, and if you'll remember the first slide, in 10 years, we've changed standards four times. PASS, Common Core, PASS, OAS. It's like, we can't get anywhere with our standards, because we'll get on a roll, we'll develop units, we'll develop common formative assessments, we'll develop assessments, and then we'll have the standards changed on us. And we need something that we can all sink our teeth into and move forward. And obviously, minimum criteria is not getting the job done with our students. Now, because all of our kids take the ACT test, doesn't mean they're college-bound. You know, I still believe our teachers have to teach those soft skills too, for kids to be successful in school, because not everyone's going to go to college. So, it's gonna be a big jolt, and we will likely have our information, we'll share the data with you in November. And hopefully, we can reach out to parents and explain to them that this is a total reset. We are not comparing. And in fact, in our school improvement plans, I think, Terry, you just took out the previous state testing data, didn't you?
Yes. And also, just one, one more thing I'd like to let you know is that, you know, we're probably a little further along in a lot of districts. We have, you know, we have scales in place for our standards, and there are probably very few that have that already in place. And so, our scales are there to be used and help those students rank their understanding. And there are specific scales that have that depth of knowledge within them. And so, you know, our teachers are already using those. We, we have worked hard to make sure that curriculum maps are in place, and we've had to change them every year that these standards have changed. But now, we're working on, now we have those skills in place, and we're working this year on getting common formative assessments for all those standards.
I do think we are ahead of the curve. We knew this was coming, but I don't think that our community is prepared for the, for the jolt in the change of the proficiency rates. Any other questions about that? So I'm gonna go on to something that's a little more positive. Even though that's positive, I think we'll be... Even though that's positive, I think we'll be heading in the right direction finally for our students, is our One Book, One District Initiative. This, we have completed seven selections. We are about to start our eighth selection, and the One Book, One District Initiative is something that can bring our school community and our patrons together. Because you know when you're reading a book that someone else is reading, you always want to discuss this book, and we're all on the same book. It gives us a lot to talk about, and we can reap the benefits of reading together as a district. So, the book for this go-round of One Book, One District is The Adventures of a South Pole Pig. And all of you have your books except for Robin and David, and yours are in the executive board room. Again, teachers work hard to engage our students, our parents, and our community into the reading. They have special assemblies. They decorate their building based on the theme. They create activities, anywhere from arts activities to creative writing projects. They organize assemblies. Teri has created a bookmark that indicates our schedule. It starts tomorrow, by the way, October the 10th, and it can be downloaded off our district website. The community will get involved. If you listen to KPNC or KLOR, you can hear our DJs talking about it every morning. And this is Flora the Pig. She's our main character, and she's very adventuresome. She decides, she sees some sled dogs and decides she wants to become a sled pig. The next thing you know, she's on a boat to Antarctica, and she's in for the most exhilarating adventure of her life. And we're going to travel along with Flora while she becomes a sled pig. So, please join us in our reading. It starts tomorrow. Any questions about our One Book, One District Initiative? This is number eight. All right. That's it, David.
This time, we'll have the motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Six-one, consider and take action on the following district financial reports.
I assume it's went well since I was gone.
We're all still standing, Don. So, I'll move to approve six-one.
I'll second it.
Moves in second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Six-two, consider and take action on the revision to district wellness policy.
Motion to approve six-point-two.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? We'll vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Consider and take action on the recognition of the following events. A, American Education Week. B, the month of November 17 as National American Indian Heritage Month. C, Celebrate Freedom Week. D, Oklahoma Education Support Personnel Week. Need a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Six-four, consider and take action on resolution to K County Election Board calling for the annual election of Board Education Member in Ward Number Three.
Motion to approve six-point-four.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think it's all just the standard format you have to go through for filing that position.
Okay, we'll vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Six-five, consider and take action on the 2017, 2018 Ponca City Schools District and Site Improvement Title One Plans.
Motion to approve that wonderful document. I haven't got through it all, but I've been working on it. I do have a request. Can we, can you put that on a flash drive? Will it fit?
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Chris.
Would you, could make it easier for me, for sure? Because I, everything we've got to, I need, if it's possible, just to have for the next time.
Yeah, next time.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. Four or five years now, I've looked at these, and a lot of the wording's the same, and we have all these goals and expectations of ninety percent this, seventy percent this, et cetera, et cetera. Do we ever, how do we ever compare from one year to the next? I mean, did we meet the goals, not meet them? I mean, it's all on a positive-going-forward basis.
The PLC meets, and they determine their, where they are and where they've come every year, so it's a working document. We...
Right, but overall, did we do good? Or, I mean, I looked through them this afternoon, but I couldn't really tell as compared to previous years.
Depends on their goal. You know, we want to set a SMART goal, and Teri, I'm going to let you address that.
Also, we have changed this year, some of you might have noticed that instead of them setting their goals regarding the standardized test, they have set it for STAR, to use our STAR data. And the reason for that is because we never get our testing back in time to even set the goals. And also, when we get that, that information can inform you as a teacher that those kids have moved on, so it's hard to really know, you know, okay, what do I really do with that data? But the STAR data is data that they get beginning of a year, test results on, and that's their benchmark, and then they're moving, they're working on growing those kids throughout the year. And most of them test with STAR once a month, some more than that, some a little bit less, but it's pretty standard once a month. And they have data walls set up in their schools, and they're moving kids up or down on that continuum, trying to get them to different range levels within that testing program. What they're really trying to get them to is grade level proficiency, which is around the fiftieth percentile. So, they're working toward that. As far as the SMART goals, we encourage them to set high SMART goals. Of course, they need to be achievable, but what I always say to teachers is, okay, so if you set it like we're going to hit seventy percent, so are you okay with thirty percent of those kids failing? That's how you have to look at it. That's someone's child. Those are kids, and their data walls have kids' names on them. They're very personal. So, you're taking that child, and you're moving him up or you're moving him down. It's a child in the classroom. So, I get that they're, you know, they may seem lofty because some of them say thirty percent, some of them say seventy percent, but I always look at that as, you know, I'm not going to lie at all, thirty percent. We want, we want to be ninety percent or above, right, Phil?
Without a doubt.
And that's where we want to be. So, that's what we're, that's what we're aiming for. Kind of, but also...
I guess, yeah, and it does, but I guess what I'm looking for is, will we ever see a metric of, here was the goal, and here's where we ended up the year?
No, but we can certainly do that.
I don't know, do we need it?
That's from the beginning of the year to the end of the year.
And I agree with you. Thirty percent, the worrying about the thirty percent's way more important to me than whether seventy made it. I agree with that, that part of it.
And what they do is they have either BLT teams, they call it, they have teams. When they get those, those school improvement plans completed that you guys were proving, they take that to those committees, and those committees have teachers on them, parents on them, sometimes they have students on them, and they go over that plan with them. And they're asking that committee, keep me responsible for implementing everything within this plan, and keep me responsible for checking these goals. So, we, I mean, they're checking their goals toward their progress with STAR every month. So, they are, they are keeping track of it, if that's what you're asking, Robin.
Yeah.
And I mean, since we've moved to STAR, it'll be even, even more relevant to them, I believe. So, they set really beginning to the end of the year goals instead of fall to fall goals with the standardized testing.
More real-time data, and when I mentioned earlier, we know that that formative data, that ongoing assessment with STAR, that our students are being successful, and that's what we want.
Only other question I had on it, and this is kind of a minor detail, and I know we don't use EOIs anymore, but in 2016, we had some really bad EOIs, rated unsatisfactory. Did you still pass with an unsatisfactory? I mean, we had some twenty-eight, thirty-three, and forty percent by skill level.
I don't know about you, Lawrence.
EOI unsatisfactory. They had left, so he didn't have to answer.
Well, they can't graduate unless they pass a certain number of EOIs.
Right, but as unsatisfactory, can you still pass and be rated unsatisfactory?
Well, you have to have four out of seven, so...
But we had like forty, forty percent failed in biology were unsatisfactory.
I can answer that as a college teacher.
Go ahead, Mr. Murray.
The EOI scores are not attached to the classroom grade at all. So, a student could pass the course, not pass the state test, or vice versa. They could pass the state test, fail the course. Now, when we saw that happening several years ago, we figured out we were doing total points and giving way too much homework. That kids weren't turning in. They knew the material. They weren't doing the daily work, and so we've made, some of it, we've made some changes that were emphasizing assessment data rather than, in-class assessment data rather than homework that is practice, not penalizing them for not doing it if they understand it. But, yeah, you can fail.
So, if you had forty percent unsatisfactory, that means forty percent of the kids, that was one of the seven they failed?
Yes.
Correct.
And then we had like thirty-three percent in Algebra II and twenty-eight percent in History. So, they had to pick it up in some other subjects?
They did, or retake, so...
Okay, that's what I thought. I actually looked at them, David. I told you I was going to.
But it is a working document. I mean, we don't want to put our principals and our staff through building that document. That's the point, you know, to keep you on track. And I would invite any of you to sit in on our PLC process at any of our sites. They run like a well-oiled machine. They know their data, and they continue to work toward that progress.
Okay, we need to vote on six-five.
I'll motion it.
Do we have a motion?
Newsom and you do. He motioned it, and I'll, yes.
You second it?
Yes, I definitely do.
Okay, we'll vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Yeah, exactly.
We need to, yes.
Six-six, motion and vote to convene an executive session for the following purpose: discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel in the attached detailed personnel report to discuss confidential conversation with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation and discussed negotiations. So, need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. On the favor? Oh, no, we're going to vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
We're going to return to open session. We cited by the board president that the minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk remain confidential. Six-nine, consider and take action on recommendation for termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel shown on the attached detail. We have a motion on that?
I move to approve.
Second.
They're moved and approved. Any discussion? Vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Recommend that as a superintendent, oh, no, I'm sorry, new business?
No new business.
No new business. Motion for adjournment.
I motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.